So I'm gonna, I don't know that works. I'm gonna go ahead and open tonight's school committee meeting for November twenty ninth. Um, you only have a couple of items on the agenda. The first one is really two items at once. We're gonna um explain it and then we're gonna promote it. And second, we're gonna request from the board, we ask for motion to uh have the selectmen post the vacancy that we have here on the school committee. And also in conjunction with that, to ask them not only to post it, but to include us in the process. And what that'll be is they'll post it, it'll be on thirty days. So we'll get with their chairman and figure out when their next meeting is after the first of the year. We'll then have a combined meeting with them. So us four and their five, and then we're, depending on how many applicants, we'll select uh, who would, who would fill that vacancy until the next election and then have to come an open spot in January. So I don't know if anyone has anything else to add before, before I open it. Steve?
No, I think that makes sense. I mean, I think the actual, when we, when the selectmen join us, we'll finalize that timeline. But then that's the whole point of, of the joint part. Uh, I think just from uh this sort of pre-meeting is just sort of uh, letters of interest of filling the vacancy on school committee.
I'll second that.
Hey, any further discussion? We're actually gonna stay put and we'll let them know and chairman's right there. So as soon as we're done here, anything else? All in favor? Yeah, this, uh, Steve, for your presentation, you want us to just wait? The next thing on the agenda is the, is the middle school project. Do you want us to wait till?
Yeah, the second thing said joint meeting with the selectmen. So I think the plan was to sort of have them sort of join us for this next part. Cause then we'd sort of have a little overlap here where we discuss that. I'll go over the presentation, the handout real quick and then we'll officially adjourn our meeting. So yes, we're just waiting on that.
Thank you.
This one's a lot more comfy. You can just slide the seat over the other side of the table. I like this one.
I think the cameras are still on. Mike.
Tina, how are you?
Um, well, how's it?
I'm well.
We'll begin tonight's select board meeting. Uh, the first item on the agenda is public comment. Is there anyone here for public comment? There'd be none. The next item is the review of minutes for November first, two thousand twenty-three.
I'll move to approve the minutes for November first, two thousand twenty-three.
I'll second.
Any discussion?
I'm gonna be staying, I was not at the meeting.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Staying.
Wow. The next item on the agenda would be the joint meeting with school committee for the board vacancy.
Okay.
So we requested the committee is to post the vacancy. So if we can put something out for letters of interest for that and then meet together.
Yeah, I think, I think um, so we just had our meeting. Uh, people were just tuned in, we had the school committee had a meeting at six fifty uh to formally request selectmen to uh post the vacancy and allow the school committee to be part of filling that vacancy. Um, I know that unofficially we, uh, Mr. Ward and I had spoken a little bit about a timeline that might work just looking at the meeting schedules. And I think the idea was to try to post basically as soon as we can following this meeting, but it'll take a little while to get in the paper, that kind of stuff. Um, probably having the, anyone who submits a letter of interest have that due towards the end of December with the hope of having another joint meeting. I think it was January third uh at the, one of the first uh selectmen scheduled meetings. Um, and at that point to review the uh letters of interest. I think that's, um, Mr. Ward, I know you're nodding, but I don't know if I said it.
Yeah, no, absolutely. You probably can't, can't see me, but uh, but the, if we get a notice Friday to the newspaper, we publish next week. And then at that point, however long the boards would like that to be open. And then the select board will be meeting first and third Wednesday in January. So if that works for January third, then you can uh have all the letters, a joint meeting that night, have the letters for review that night. So uh, just how much backup, how much ahead of time you'd like to get the copies of the letters to the, all the members. So, so.
So probably posted, earliest it would be posted, this is the, this Friday would be the first. So next would be in the paper, the eighth.
Yeah, the eighth is when it would go in the paper. So it'd be starting, like notice would be the eighth, we can put it on the website ahead of time. But say the eighth and then a couple of weeks thereafter.
So probably try to request them maybe finally like the twenty-second or something like that, or is that? Unless you wanna go further and that way we could uh, the boards could have copies of the letters. So they had time to review them basically over the holidays.
Right.
Then on the third um. Coming up. I think the only other discussion that we had, cause I think last time we had did this, we were a little unclear. And I don't know if it's something we wanted to decide now, or, or if we would contact based on the, the letters. But do we, was the desire of those boards to have like candidates try to attend on the third? Like if they put a letter in, do we want them here so that they could say a few words? Or do we kind of not want them here? Cause I think it was sort of open for interpretation last time and some candidates came and some didn't. And you know, I think if we're just more clear on what the expectation is, I guess.
Yeah, just what the expectation would be so we can let them know. Cause last time it wasn't required, but when people were here, they did have the opportunity to speak, but not everyone came because they didn't think there was an interview, so.
Uh, you know, I would suggest that whatever letter of interest they provide, they articulate their position, their stance through that. And then we can vote accordingly versus having them come do the presentation where if someone's not available that day, then not disturb that stuff.
See how many we have too. If it's only a couple, you know, but yeah, if we're gonna put your meeting on Wednesday, right? So like Friday, you know, if you get that many, you like, you decide you wanna reach out to them in their own. But you're right, make sure they're all available. It's gonna be the other.
Okay. So if we say, if we say letters are due the twenty-second, that gives us that window. So at some point in that probably week for the meeting, we could reach out to candidates depending on how many there are. If, and just try to clarify the expectations and say, you know, hey, there were three letters. You're invited to come if you want, or there was ten letters, so we're not doing an interview. We're just gonna vote based on the letter. And does that seem?
That's not, that's not the intent.
Yep.
Very good. Does that require motion?
Um, yeah, probably for just to, just to set that schedule in so that we, it's a formal, it's formal.
I'll move to post the um board vacancy for the school committee and the newspaper and on the website. Um, so that it appears in the item on the eighth uh with letters due on the twenty-second of December and a vote scheduled for January third, two thousand twenty-four.
I'll second that.
Any discussion? There'd be none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Very good. The next item on the agenda is the superintendent of schools providing a middle school building project update.
Thank you. Uh, so I wanted to make sure I can give you guys an update. I know I was, I was fortunate enough to be able to talk to the chamber of commerce while uh where we are on the middle school project. Uh, I said, try to keep the school committee informed as much as possible about the building committee is, is doing with members of school. They own the building committee, um, but I wanted to try to share it. I didn't do like a PowerPoint presentation tonight. I tried to put together more of sort of like a frequently asked questions type document cause I thought this might make it a little more uh accessible and decided maybe relate more directly to some of the concerns that we're starting to hear. Um, so uh, I'll just walk through this pretty quickly. I know people probably at home can't see this, but we will do our best to, I'll try to get this on our website. Um, and I probably put it on our social media uh tomorrow, uh just so that if anyone's looking to see uh this document and you know, see the picture and stuff a little closer, then, then that's finally, it'll be there. Uh, so the first thing, just to remind everyone, what's, what is the building project right now? We are in the feasibility study phase um with uh, in a partnership with the Massachusetts School Building Authority. And uh, our team, uh, we have Dorn Whittier as our owner's project manager, and Lamer Ovagano Associates as our designer. And the funding for this was approved um at town meeting. And uh, I do think sometimes it's important to remind people that, you know, partnering with the MSBA is not something you just sort of sign up for. Um, you know, you can express interest, but the MSBA does a lot of homework and they come and they do like, so they, literally before we got accepted, we had, we had support our state in the interest in a few years. Um, and then they come to do site visits, uh, they did a virtual site visit because during COVID. Um, and they did it one onsite one year, then they did a virtual one the next year. And um, and what they do is they try to prioritize which projects that they feel are most necessary. So they look at, at the applications and try to deem which, which buildings are kind of most in need of attention. And we were deemed as uh being worthy of their grant program. So through the feasibility phase, you know, there's been other parts where we've involved everyone, looked at different options. And right now, the proposed schematic design uh that was approved by the Clinton permanent building committee and the MSBA was a new construction project. Uh, it's gonna be about a hundred, it's right now be about a hundred thirty-six thousand square foot school that would sit on the site in the current middle school feeling. So kind of be able to be built right behind the current middle school. Uh, this would be designed to house grades four through eight, deserving projectable in about seven hundred students. One of the main benefits of this uh, the new construction, um, when we look at the cost between renovation or repair and the new construction, uh, they were very, very similar. But one of the things that was really tipping point for the new construction was the way it's designed it will be able to build without disrupting the students. So that was a big, you know, with all things being, being able to uh, to not disrupt the students without was a huge component because so many of our students have had so much disruption um already. There is a couple of schematics here of what the, what the proposed building looks like. Uh, it is fourth through eight, and I know some people's question concerned about that, but it's being designed that way. So basically fourth and fifth are kind of one wing of the building, seventh and eighth are another wing of the building. And they kind of have six sort of in the middle on the second floor with the middle of the first floor being kind of your common areas. Another big question always is how much is this gonna cost? Everyone knows that uh, cost of building destruction has gone way up. Uh, we all know that, you know, the show budget approved that new high school at like two hundred and fifty million or whatever it was. Uh, the current estimated budget for this building was a hundred and forty-two million. Uh, in that, I'd like to say that, you know, just like to point out to people that that does include twenty-eight million right now that's currently estimated as contingency, right? So right now, we're still in the schematic design phase, we're, we're figuring things out. Uh, so that, we felt that hundred forty-two is basically a conservative estimate based on the square foot cost per construction right now. Uh, based on the funding formula and reimbursement caps, which fortunately the MSBA just increased their MSB, their reimbursement cap um pretty significantly, uh, basically for the second time since we've entered our agreements, uh, which has helped to reduce the local share. Uh, but right now it's that the local share for the project would be approximately seventy million dollars. Um, and so the next one says, what's that do to my taxes? Well, one of the numbers um that was shared, recent estimate for more of an exact figure was seventy-one million nine hundred fourteen thousand three hundred seventy-two. Uh, so it was actually uh, this award shared with me, a calculation that actually uh, Superit had done uh to show sort of what that uh average impact would be based on the two thousand twenty-four assess, average assessed value with the estimated uh tax rate for the show, which I know is talking for later in this meeting. Uh, but it looks like about the average cost for a new school uh would be seven hundred sixty-two dollars a year on a tax bill. Uh, so we tried to break that down, you know, if they buy it's one hundred ninety a quarter, sixty-three a month, fifteen a week, two dollars a day. Um, and, and that's another thing is, well, we'll get to that later, but that is, that's based on the estimate. Um, what's wrong with the current building? Some people try to, you know, well, people have that question. Uh, so it's two different things. I answer that a lot of times is one is from an educational perspective, um, the school is really built for like a more open concept model. If you haven't been in there, you know, we kind of had to put these weird walls in to make sort of uh oddly shaped classrooms. And some classrooms actually have to walk through a classroom to get to another classroom. Uh, beyond that, uh, there is a graphic in here that illustrates, I think I've seen it before, how almost all of the educational spaces are below the MSBA guidelines. So our rooms are, are smaller than they would recommend. Typically, the only areas that are above the MSB recommended guidelines are the uh gym and the cafeteria at this point. Uh, from a construction perspective, the building has a lot of needs uh during the feasibility study process. One of the things you have to explore if it's part of base repair, which means not doing anything, um, not doing anything to the building to improve it educationally, basically just doing what needs to be done to the building to make it sustainable for another like fifty years. And um, the cost, the, the total cost that they came up with was projected of over a hundred million. Um, and you know, I know some people think that maybe that number is high, uh, but also remember it was done using basically the same estimation that we came up with a hundred forty-two million for the school, which is using the same guidelines. Um, and the uh, the main things, um, the ones, you know, I'd say right away, I know, you know, we need to do a new roof, HVAC plumbing and electrical issues that almost need to be immediately addressed. Um, if we just do base repair, you know, basically if we were to, to elect to do a base repair, there would not be any MSBA contribution bringing the building, not just repairing the building as is would be a hundred percent funded by the town. Um, and one of the other big things, why the, why it starts getting bigger and bigger is because um, the estimated value of that building right now is twelve million dollars. Um, so basically as soon as you do one project, if you just did the roof, which needs pretty much a complete ripoff and, and redo now, it's not, it's been coded enough that it needs to now kind of be redone. Um, and same thing with the HVAC and we can say, oh yeah, we need to replace the boilers. We don't seem to replace boilers, we're not, we need to replace like the heater leaders in every room and stuff because they're not up to code. Uh, they might have been up to the code that was built when, when the building was built, they're not up to the current codes. So once we do these repairs, we're gonna trigger the fact that we have to bring things up to code. Uh, and then there's other things that get triggered in there, it's like accessibility, engine, energy poles, those types of things. Why, why would we do this now? Um, I think right now from a capital planning standpoint, um, this makes sense. Uh, I know everyone likes to call the high school the new high school, uh, just like people select to call me the new superintendent. Everyone's here seven, uh, but the new high school is now twenty-five years old. Uh, so essentially when they build a building, you know, they're really looking at trying to build a building for a fifty-year lifespan. And then after that fifty years, they anticipate it's going to need essentially a major investment, whether that's a renovation, upgrades, whatever it is, systems uh refurnished, refurbished. Um, and uh, so the high school built in nineteen ninety-eight essentially, and the elementary school built two thousand three. What you're looking at is probably around the year twenty fifty, um, you're gonna have two buildings that I think are not gonna need to be replaced with new buildings because I think the way they're built now, they're functioning. Um, they're not, you know, we're not dealing with something with like the open concept and the, and the weird classrooms and that kind of stuff. But I think both those new buildings that time are gonna need major attention in terms of how we, you know, do they need full heating upgrades? Do they need new roofs? Do they need that kind of stuff? Um, so it's almost like if you kick the can down the road too much, you know, my fear is that you're gonna be in a situation where all three buildings are gonna need a substantial amount of work at the same time. Where if you sort of with the spacing, um, if we kind of get the middle school address now, and remember moving forward now means a building that would open in two thousand twenty-seven. Um, you're hopefully in a place where about the time you would need to do anything that would be a major financial impact to those other buildings, hopefully this project is, is no longer or very soon to be coming off the books. Um, one question, we were saying construction is expensive right now, why wouldn't we wait? Um, you know, historically the cost of construction has risen with time. I know that I had a whole graph in one of my presentations where I think the old high school was built for like two million dollars or something like that, you know, and, and you can see how, how it's gone up and continues to go up. Uh, but one thing I know people specifically were talking about, well, it's recently skyrocketed because of COVID and all those things. Like, well, we'll see a market correction. And we might, and that market correction, I think there is a little bit of market correction that's happening right now. Uh, so one thing that we need to realize is that the numbers we're throwing around right now are estimates based on the current market, but every aspect of this goes out to bid. So um, you know, if, if we were projecting at a market where, you know, every, every plumbing company was, was booked solid and the cost of uh materials was crazy, and now we're bidding it in another year or two, and now it's the point where, hey, there is, there are more places maybe looking for work and the cost of supplies is down, we might do substantially better with those bids. So really at the end of the day, when we put these estimates out there, they are estimates. And if the, if the project doesn't cost that much, you're not gonna borrow much. You know, if you, if you come in under, you're gonna be under, which there are a lot of, a lot of projects pre-COVID came in uh historically, it was, it's really just that the COVID year, when people were approved down here and we saw the trade inflation, those COVID years, that's where we had a lot of these uh overruns that you've heard of probably in the news. So I think one, I just think that's something to remember is that if we were to, if we were to get approval from the MSBA in April, which is our goal, we would need to try to get town pool in June, there's not gonna be a shovel in the ground for at least another year. That year in between is basically finalizing your schematics, getting all your bid specs ready, taking that project out to bid, selecting your, usually your lowest bidder for each of your trades, and then you would really begin moving forward with construction. Um, you know, if you don't have kids in the school, what's the benefits to you? Well, obviously ultimately, the ultimate goal is project is improve the educational opportunities and outcomes for students. Um, also be able to provide at hand safety and be built with all those uh types of safety and security measures. Uh, so I feel like most people, you have child, your child, nephew is gonna get to experience it. It's a pretty easy thing to, to understand. Um, but if you don't, um, you know, improved education outcomes or the reputation of school system um is something that, you know, real estate agents, people weren't moving to that area looking for traditionally. Uh, an investment in the school system can typically lead to an increase in property values. Uh, from a budgetary perspective, uh, Clinton currently has a school choice deficit. It's not bad, but means basically we pay, the time Clinton pays out more money to uh other surrounding towns. Basically, you pay it off to the state and then the state funds it out. But essentially, we're paying out more money to our students who school choice to leave the district than we receive in from students who school choice to come into the district. Um, you know, in the early two thousands when Clinton had two brand new schools, that was kind of reversed a little bit, right? So uh, a lot of times you can see that when uh, you know, we lose, the most kids that we lose in a school choice are in the middle school. Um, no, part of that is also due to different opportunities that might pop up in, in that age range. Um, but I think that that's typically something that could happen. So from a year-to-year basis, you might stabilize that, that income. Um, and it's an investment in the community. So it's much like the high school project, uh, it's an investment that attracts people and businesses to the town. You know, you wanna, you wanna show that you're um, you know, it, it's a way of showing that we're invested that the town supports the schools and, and it's just another thing that just builds, builds and brings the community together. So what are the next steps? Um, working with the OPM designer to keep refining the schematic design. So there are different, there are lots of meetings going on all the time behind the scenes. We just got another one, I think for next week with uh Chief Woods and Chief Coin. And it's a public safety meeting where we just go through and make sure that we have all the public safety features. We look at little things like even design from a design standpoint. If you look at a hallway, one of the recent changes that was kind of tweaked was just the placement of a stairwell. Because we're moving a stairwell from here to there, gave you like a clear Because we're moving a stairwell from here to there, gave you like a clear shot, which was a better of of visual clear visual shot down the whole run of the school, which is considered a benefit for safety, you know what I mean? So there's little things like that. You're constantly sort of refining at this stage. And then to continue, the goal will be to get the final schematic approved in April twenty twenty four by the MSBA. If it's approved, the town would have to seek to fund the project, or we would seek to get the town to fund the project on June of twenty twenty four. And then if funded, construction will probably begin in the spring or summer of twenty twenty five, and the goal of opening in the fall of twenty twenty seven. So that's kind of just a rundown of where we are. I just wanted to kind of take a moment to sort of just address some of the talking points that I know we've heard. There is also, there is a dedicated Clinton Middle School Building Project page that is run by our OPM that has all the minutes from the building committee, all the agendas, different, different things on it. So if you want to, just QR code right on this presentation, the link in this presentation. So I said, we'll get this on our website. We'll get it on our social media. But you can always follow there or our public, our building committee is also public as well. Those are posted, I think the next one's December nineteenth. And that's a, that's a, that's a public meeting, and a lot of those are virtual. So if anyone wants to just, so you can go to the town website, we can see the agendas, and you can usually just kind of pop in if you're interested in knowing what's going on. The next big step the building committee has is we are looking to try to hire a construction manager. So you bring the construction manager on board now to start working, measure, finalizing those schematics to kind of get ready so that if it does get approved, we're ready to kind of get those bids out and go, go quicker. So that's, I think there's some interviews for that coming up, December thirteenth or something. There was a whole RFP process that went for that. So. So that's kind of where we are. I don't know if anyone has any specific questions from me, or if there's anything that you're hearing that you'd like me to, you think I should try to, you know, get more information out on or or anything like that.
I just have one question. When you had the meeting in the spring, you're talking about the share from the MSBA going up. I know at that particular time, it was like three nine to three. You said it went up substantially. Could you just?
It's like it's like five forty or somewhere around there. Yeah, well, it's over five hundred. I don't quote me on the five forty. I know that's not the exact right number, but there's actually an additional amount for site work too, that the MSBA will tell you there are more at like six hundred. So yeah, it's gone up. It went up quite a bit. And actually, from our estimates, you know, it basically that that amount that they've increased it reduced the local share, probably about twelve million dollars, what it would have been, so.
Thank you.
Any good questions?
Mr. Chair, no, I love, this is great. I love the project along. I love the choice you guys made. How are we up to going forward? We're just, we're going to wait for town meeting or?
Yeah, I know. We're trying to keep, you know, they're starting to get to a fun part now. I got to preview a few renderings of like what the outside of the building might look like. So we're starting to kind of to that level. So I think as we get more of those done, we want to continue to get them out there. And I just think, you know, the only thing, if I know specifically what would help me is if any of you hear specific concerns, like if you're having conversations with people on there, people that are like, hey, I don't get it. Why aren't we, whatever, if you kind of let, let us know that, we can try to get the answers and try to get those out there and 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 who knows? I mean, some of those things might be good points and bring it to the OPM and they go, yeah, why didn't we think of that or something, you know, but, but those are, you know, so anything like that, just trying to get communication out and and we'll, we'll try to step up our efforts to make sure that people are aware of it as well as we continue to get things, you know, more more pretty things that we can get out there so people can really kind of visualize what this will look like.
Mr. Chair, yeah, as having family in Lancaster, I mean, I've kind of seen the preview come into traction. So there's a lot of, there's a lot to be learned from the misinformation that was out there with the Michelle project, and I know there's differences, but I think we're lucky that that went before us and that we can see, you know, where the pain points came from.
That was very clear. Thank you.
At this time, if you don't mind, we're going to take a motion here to adjourn our part of the meeting, right? As much as I like to hang out with you guys, anybody from the school committee getting anything else to add? Any problem with adjournments? Thanks for having us.
Anytime.
Thank you very much. Eddie asked me to just let me inform him.
It's the fun chair.
I know. How do you get one of those fancy bags?
Very good. All right, the next side of the agenda, fiscal year in 2024 tax classification public hearing. We will open this evening's hearing. And we'll start with the chief assessor.
So I know you've all had the material for some time now, and I'm sure you had a chance to review it. Would you like me to go through a few items or do you want to move forward and approach it however you feel comfortable?
Suggest anything that you feel that you want to touch upon. We should know that that'd be great.
Just get on the list. Referring to your book, page four, this was a full reval year, fiscal year twenty four. So every parcel, every property, every improvement has been, including land, has been reviewed, revalued under the standard appraisal practices. Those values have all been certified by the state for some time now. So now this is the second phase of setting the tax rate. But the values are done and we won't do a full reval again until fiscal year twenty nine. But as you know, the DOR has changed their standards. So we're essentially every year is a reval, but the documentation behind it. So so we do review all parcels every year now. On page seven and eight, you can see some market trend data there. I think the easiest thing to look at is on page eight. Even though there has been some slowdown in in real estate, by looking at that chart, you can see that the average days, average days on market are pretty consistent from the previous year. And there was a little decline in sales, but those are still very strong. On page nine, those are the trends going into calendar year twenty three, and the only decline that we're seeing is in the two and three families at a negative one percent in value, which is pretty insignificant statistically, really. So we still continue to see an increase in values. So page twelve, which is really why we're here, about shifting the rate. I did some research just to kind of give the board a little more information. So as noted in there, it's about thirty one percent of the communities do some form of a shift. And that's for this year, it's a hundred and seventy, a hundred and seven, excuse me, communities that that have a shift in place from twenty three. So over a ten year period, this is kind of interesting, thirty six of those have increased their shift. Sixteen have decreased the shift. Fifty six have maintained a shift within the one or two points. Eight have gone away from doing any shift and gone back to a single rate. Six have gone from a single rate to a small shift, less than five percent out of the hundred and seven. So those numbers don't add up to a hundred and seven because some are in and some are out. But I thought that was kind of interesting to see over a ten year period. There's, once again, we struggle to find that, what's the right answer? And that doesn't help. But it, but it is suggested that people, you know, a lot of communities are looking at alternatives there and see what does make sense for them. Page fifteen, at the very bottom, average increase has been a hundred and twenty eight dollars over the period of time since I've been here, since fiscal year two thousand, just as a reference. Page sixteen, you're seeing the fiscal year trending of values based on our analysis that's been certified. And you can see that, you know, almost everything has been double digit increase, pretty close, commercial lagging at four percent. But pretty much everything's around a ten percent increase. Page seventeen, the blue column on the right represents our values by class and what that class would pay without a shift. So each portion would bear that percentage of levy. Page eighteen is illustrating what would happen to those who would pay what per class based on a one fifty shift, which is where we are now. Page nineteen is basically giving us what the actual maximum levy could be if we were to go to the full amount. But the estimate at the bottom of thirty two million eight thousand three sixty four is currently where we stand. On page twenty, I'm kind of giving you an array here, showing the increase to the levy of one million three ninety three. And if we maintain the one fifty shift, those would be the rates thirteen fourteen and twenty one eighty one. And then going two points in each direction a little bit, just to give you some ideas, and then showing where it would be at a single rate. And probably the most important slide here is twenty one, which shows the actual estimated impact to the average single family. So at a hundred and fifty percent shift, which is where we are currently, that last year's tax would have gone from four thousand nine forty six to five thousand two ninety nine. So that estimate estimates outing about three hundred and fifty three dollars to the average taxpayer for an increase, maintaining that shift. On slide twenty two, I just kind of stratified that a little bit to show you, you know, the impact to a lower valued property to a higher valued property. Obviously, there's ones outside that range, but it gives you an idea. Twenty three, slide twenty three, you can get an idea on the first yellow column to the left, but those particular parcels were paying for real estate tax. And at one fifty, what would happen to those? And then at the various other rates, four points down or four points up, what would happen to those? And then on slide twenty four, the green bar across is indicating the approximate point where everyone would share the increased burden equally on a like valued property. So at one fifty two, so slightly higher than where we are, that kind of represents as close as we can get to being an equilibrium point where each of the commercial, industrial, personal versus the residential side would share that increase. So in the final slide twenty five, a few options there. The options are yours and unlimited, but obviously, single tax rate, I don't think anybody's thinking of that. We can stay where we are. We could go up to the one fifty two, which would approximate that impact point. We could go down two points to one forty eight, which would be as recommended by the class taxification committee in two thousand and eighteen, or we can select any other shift. And I'm happy to answer any other questions that I can.
Any questions for anyone on board?
I don't have any questions. Just congratulations to you, Dave, because it's very comprehensive and very easy to understand and great job.
Yeah, I agree with Mary. It's lack of questions, I think, are good because this packet was very informative and appreciate the time and effort you put into it.
Well, after twenty five years, that kind of happened.
Yeah.
What you'd be looking for.
Mr. Chair, Troy, just a couple of questions for the people at home. The maximum allowable levy is thirty four eight.
Yes.
And we're, the actual levy is thirty two million. Is that good or bad?
That's good. That's very good. It's good because most communities are putting out their maximum and and they're not getting enough funds to to run their, their community. So they're passing overrides. So the override lives outside of that. So that's a number without, without any overrides, and we're able to stay a couple of million dollars under our budgeted capacity to to raise taxes.
Has that always been the case?
No, we, we've worked right to the, right to the dollar there pretty close years ago, but, you know.
A approximate when that's changed?
Probably about the last four years. Do you agree, Mike? I would say maybe five, but yeah, maybe five.
Good. Thank you. And sorry, one more. If we stayed at one fifty, it's estimated for the average, I guess, average single family home, a three hundred and fifty three dollar increase. Does that have anything to do with the tax plan? That's the budget, right?
Well, yeah, I mean, obviously, this is all driven by the budget, which we voted on six months ago.
Right.
Now we're just trying to figure out who's going to pay that share of the budget. So, so as you shift through those ranges, you're just apportioning who's paying for it. You're not raising or lowering the budget. You're just saying commercial is going to pay more or residential is going to pay.
So we have to, we all voted for this budget in June. We have, we're paying for it now.
That's correct.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other questions? All right.
Mr. Chair, I moved that we set the tax split at one point four eight.
Pointy pointer. It is a hearing you would need.
Oh, sorry. Oh, I apologize. Yep. Jump of the gun.
Very good. So is there anyone here that would like to speak in favor of? Well, would like to speak in in favor of anyone here that has anything that they'd like to contribute to the discussion on the tax classification? Is there anyone here? Troy, come on up.
Hi, everyone. That's Ben.
All right. If you could just introduce yourself for the people at home.
Yep, for the record, my name is David Sullivan. I'm the Director of Economic Development and Business Recruitment for local street regional Chamber of Commerce. Here in my capacity as a board member of the Clinton area Chamber of Commerce, and I have Lauren.
Lauren Crossman Nanoff, President of the Clinton Area Chamber of Commerce, also business owner in Clinton.
So as you all know, I've been involved with the Clinton Chamber for the past year or so. I love being here. I love my time in Clinton. It's a great community you have. But we're here tonight to testify in favor of trying to move closer to a single rate. It's something we've done in Worcester for quite some time. The Clinton Chamber is an association of over fifty town businesses, and we see our role as an advocate for business owners who run the restaurants, manufacturers, bars, retail stores, law firms, and and others that make up the Clinton community. And Lauren and I are here today, obviously, to speak in favor and speak on their behalf in trying to get to a single rate. For several years, obviously, the select board has has moved or at least made neutral moves towards getting to a single rate, and we appreciate that. We want to thank you for that. Clinton's reduced the CIP rate by twenty seven percent in the past five years, which is more than any other of the seven remaining communities in Worcester County that still have a split rate. This is great, and we want to thank you for obviously being a part of that, but we're here to to really try to hammer home that we can't let up the momentum on that, especially now. And Clinton still ranks in the top fifteen percent of the highest commercial tax rates in Massachusetts. I believe it's fifty fifth, the highest CIP in Massachusetts out of three hundred and fifty one cities and towns. So we're, you know, we have communities around us like Fitchburg that's achieved a single rate in twenty nineteen. We have other communities around us that have significantly lower tax rates when it comes to commercial and industrial. Clinton's a very dense community. So obviously, if there's a employer or a business that's looking to locate in this area, they have a lot of options. And we want to make sure that Clinton is a very competitive option for them. You know, Marlborough, West Boylston, Leominster, even Devons, some of these have split rates, but they all have lower commercial rates than Clinton. So obviously, I'm not here to speak about Worcester, but I I think, you know, I do bring that perspective, and I like to share a little bit about that. Because Worcester obviously has a split rate. We've had it for thirty years. Our total levy of the, the tax levy that's come from commercial, industrial, personal has shrunk significantly from thirty five percent in nineteen eighty four to twenty one percent today. So in other terms, our commercial base, which we're taxing significantly more, almost double what we taxed the residential side, is paying significantly less than what it did thirty years ago when we first enacted the split rate. So I'm, in our opinion, split tax rate is really a formula for disproportionately shifting this burden onto small businesses and entrepreneurs. Those are the folks who really get hit the hardest, not necessarily your large employers and big businesses with large amounts of square footage. With triple net leases, the way that many commercial leases are set up today, the tenants, the storefronts, they're the ones that are ultimately paying the property taxes. So that means that your entrepreneurs and your small businesses, you know, five or less employees, those are the ones that we're representing here tonight, and those are the ones who are really paying most. They're bearing the burden of when you keep the CIP the same, or you keep the split rate, or you increase taxes on the commercial side, those are the ones who are really when you keep the CIP the same, or you keep the split rate, or you increase taxes on the commercial side, those are the ones who are really taking the burden of that. So ultimately, it's, it's, to us, it's not a discussion about pitting the interests of homeowners against business owners, right? It's a discussion about how we can grow the tax base for Clinton in general. That way, we have more taxable property value. That way, we can fund more municipal services. And ultimately, everybody pays less because if we have a bigger pie, then not, you know, the residents aren't stuck with footing a larger bill like has happened in Worcester. So we want to make sure that we support, we support a local vibrant business community, the businesses that make up our community and make it a great place to live and raise a family. That's really the important thing here, and that's what we want to hit home. So I, I believe that we can do that while also keeping the cost of living relatively low. And just want to thank you all for your hard work on this every year. Really appreciate it. Understand that you have a decision to make and have to weigh the, you know, the interests of different parties. So thank you for that. And I'll know if Lauren.
Yeah, just to reiterate again, I want to thank you for your work as well as David and your office for your work in lowering the rate to get it closer to a single rate. Speaking as a business owner's standpoint, I think a lot of people think that the CIP rate falls on the bigger commercial industrial businesses, but it is the small business owners themselves, whether they have under ten employees, but it's more of the businesses, the small businesses that only have, you know, for us, under five. But as we're seeing now too, speaking as a, from a Realtor standpoint too, showing a lot of commercial properties, you know, seeing the tax rate lower in neighboring communities, it's that decision that they're making to go elsewhere besides staying in Clinton. So at a time where we're trying to grow and the Chamber of Commerce is trying to bring new businesses in, it's, it's important that it at least stays the same, if not can move in the future to be lowered.
Thank you. Happy to take any questions or anything, but otherwise, thank you.
Any questions?
Thank you.
Thanks.
Is there anyone else here that would like to speak on the tax classification?
Mr. Chairman, can I?
Oh, yeah.
Oh, yeah.
I didn't know if anybody else could.
Oh, okay.
Absolutely. If, if you're ready to go.
Oh, I didn't know if you
Oh, I didn't, I didn't know.
Like anybody else.
So I didn't know.
Sean did recommend one forty-eight, but I just have to say that I, I'd be opposed to it and I would love to see it go up to one fifty-four. My reasoning hasn't changed than it, any more than it did last year, that I think there are a lot of elderly people in this town, a lot of moderate to low income people. And in the last ten years, it's gone from one sixty-five down to one fifty, and I think, you know, I haven't seen a lot of industry, big industry. I know that small businesses obviously are trying to survive. But also seniors are trying to survive. And, you know, the, the federal government already announced they're only going to give them a little bit more than three percent. We all know what people are paying for groceries, more than twenty-one percent for, for food, electricity, gas. All costs have gone up, and I, I just think for a year or so to, to give the seniors a break is what my intent is with the one fifty-four, so.
Very good. Something that has been a source of frustration for me since I've been on the Select Board when it comes to the tax classification is there is a significant lack of data that is provided to back the claims up that are made. So whether it's you know, businesses leaving a community because of the tax rate, whether it's businesses prioritizing tax rate when they're looking to expand into a new area. Why commute, you know, the seventy-one percent of the communities that have a single tax rate? What drives that? And I, I mean, for several years, I've just, I've, you know, looked and looked and looked, and there's just not a lot of information out there that really that, that I find that has any, that provides any anecdote as to why one's better than the other. There was an article from two thousand fourteen, I think it was the Worcester Chamber that did where they looked at the split rate and how one, you know, there was one instance where a business was looking to relocate in the city, Lake Attica area, and they could either be on the Shrewsbury side and pay significantly less tax as to being on the Worcester side. But outside of that, I, you know, I, I don't find a lot, and I, I feel, feel that there's there tends to be some fear mongering where if, you know, the taxes are too high, the businesses are going to leave, or the businesses aren't going to come. You know, then you look a few miles to the east of us at Hudson, who has a very high commercial tax rate, and they're booming. And I understand that, you know, the Hudson's and the Marlborough's and the West Boylstones and the Wusters, they have highway access, which we don't have. The town of Clinton has, as was mentioned, you know, the the, the burden on the SIP has, has decreased significantly, upwards of nine dollars over the last six or seven years, based on what I can find. So I think the town, you know, the town has been supportive of small businesses. And another portion, you know, I've talked to two business owners that, that rent on High Street. Within the last two years, one business, their, their rental went up fifty percent. The other person, their rent went up eighty-eight percent. So we've, we've looked at how the tax rate for the commercial property has decreased twenty-seven percent that was mentioned, but the rental rate, obviously, because of the market, has, has not reflected that. Those are the businesses that I think we're likely to lose. You know, we, we had many empty storefronts on, on High Street at one period of time. There are significantly less now. So I, I don't, you know, to me, I think, as I mentioned, I think it's a bit of, it seems to be trickle-down economics to me. So when we look at the, the number of commercial revenue generated in the state of Massachusetts, approximately eighty percent, this is two thousand twenty-two, eighty percent of that revenue comes from twenty percent of the communities in Massachusetts that have, that are split tax rates. So to me, you know, that's nothing more than descriptive analytics. But that, to me, there, there's some, something there that is indicative of having a split rate and how it benefits the community. You know, when we look at Worcester County, according to the two thousand seventeen Farm Bureau, twenty-one percent of the farmland in Massachusetts is in Worcester County. That, you know, if, if those towns that have farmland were on a split rate, those farms would be paying a commercial tax rate if they were sixty-one A. So it would benefit the farms to have a single tax rate because they'd be playing, they'd be paying a lesser rate as, you know, as far as the residential side. So again, I just don't, I don't see a lot, I just don't see anything that really points in one direction or the other. I think that if, you know, to select person Dicko's point, almost fifty percent of our community is on, is considered economically disadvantaged. They're on free reduced lunch in the public schools. Our senior population is, is approaching twenty-five hundred residents. And I think at this time, to, to continue shifting down towards a single tax code, a single tax rate, I think is, it's not the time. And I don't agree, I, I don't think that we should be, I, I'm not personally in favor of shifting the burden back to the commercial, but I think we need to hit pause to maintain where it is right now. And I would hope that there's some information or some data that could be provided by the Chamber of Commerce is that, you know, that I would love to look at and, and make a, an informed decision. But until they're at that point, I, I can't, I'm not supportive of, of working towards a single, single rate. Let's get to the rest of them.
Mr. Chair.
Sure.
Thank you. I I could play the greatest hits here. I've, I've done this for a few years. I'm in favor of chipping away. We had, I chaired a committee and subcommittee with Mr. Barrett, Mr. Chair Bean, and a few other people that looked at this. And yeah, there's, it's, data's hard to come by, and it still is. If you Google around, it's hard to find that there's a direct correlation from A to B to anything, which we mentioned in our report. And again, not to play the greatest hits, but we also don't have a lot of control of things as far as attracting businesses. We can't get closer to the highways. We can do better certainly with workforce training, but the tax split is one thing that we can control. So that's something that this board in two thousand and eighteen chose to make the hard decision to, to chip away at a two percent every year. Obviously, we can't get down to it. As I was thinking of this meeting, I, I thought, I'm thinking maybe I've been framing this wrong the whole time. I, I think a lot of people think that we're trying to change what's normal into something that's different, when we should be looking at it different, because frankly, if this town got along fine for a hundred and thirty-two years without the tax split. And if you look back at the good old days, I don't think anybody looks at the eighties or the nineties, which is when this, this took place. And when, as the Department of Revenue noted in a two thousand and four report to the legislature, it's just a cheap political trick. It, it's basically, we, and again, I love every December how we get fiscally conservative, but in June, we're throwing bags of cash around. Because that's really what it is. Like, everybody's concerned about seniors now, but when we're voting for a four and a half percent budget increase, we're not really talking about it then. So we're just paying a bill that we all agreed to. Everyone on this table signed on to, and Tom Eady did in June. So we're paying that bill. What, 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 what the politicians here want to do is just pass that off on somebody who can't vote and make it easier when they go to the store or the ballpark or church to say, oh, you know, we're doing our best to keep, keep taxes low. If we, if we propose today to move to a split of a hundred and fifty percent, it'd be absurd. They, they, like, how would you ever, I, I'd love to hear people argue why the other way's a good idea. Like, I, every year I have to argue why I want to chip away at two percent. How would you ever say to a different class of property owner, to someone who owns a house in this town and a small business who has to pay payroll and do infrastructure improvements, how would you say, you have to pay more than us? It just doesn't make any sense. And so I'm not going to bang my head against the wall anymore, because it doesn't make, it doesn't make any sense. So as, as the person with the chamber said, the more we hit pause, and again, I watched the meeting on the tape before I came here. We paused last year, and we paused the year before. So what we're going to do is to keep pausing away. It's on tape, so you can go back and look at it. It's never going to be better, just like it's never a good time to save for your 401K. It's never a good time to make hard decisions. We made a hard decision in two thousand and eighteen. And really, to stick to those decisions in the hard times and the good times. It's really easy to do it when it's good. When it's hard, we still have to make those decisions because it's going to lead us to a better place. And so we keep at this, we can keep pausing it, but that golden goose is, is going to go away. That, that CIP is going to shrink, and we're going to have to shift more back on the residential eventually. So yeah, is there data for this? No. But is it right? It's still not, no. So I repeat my motion to, to continue our progress. This plan is working despite what people think. And I, I'd like to move to one point four eight.
Is there a second?
I just, Mr. Chairman.
Is, is that a motion? Is there a second?
Yeah, I will second it.
There's a second discussion?
Well, just on a discussion again, I, I would just say that, you know, no one could have ever envisioned the pandemic coming in two twenty. And there's a lot of people who haven't recovered from it. I'm not saying that you don't at some point in time start going and moving as the economy dictates, but I just don't think this is the time. I think there are people out there who legitimately need that little break. And I, and I just don't see how it really has a major deficit on the town of Clinton. I mean, we've seen great things happen in this town, and I'm sure they will continue to. But I just feel that, that this isn't an impact that we to give people, some people a break, that it's going to make the impact and ruin this town for a year or so.
Mr. Chair.
Oh, one second before you
Can we just clarify the impact of moving down? What, what this terrible impact is going to be to the seniors? I have like twenty-four dollars for an average house?
Twenty-two.
Twenty-two.
So you know, you have no data to support your point. You, you said that. There's no data out there. So you keep saying that, that it leads us to a better place, but I'm not exactly sure how you, how, how do you show that? What, what do you have to, to prove that? Other than a, a study, a committee that met in two thousand and eighteen, okay, which members on that committee own commercial property in the town of Clinton, number one. Okay. Secondly, I think you were the only person on this board in two thousand and eighteen, when that was done, the board's changed. So
It certainly has.
Absolutely has. So, so for, for you to, you know, for you to suggest that the board, this board made a commitment to that. This board did not make a commitment to it.
A braver board did.
A braver board. Now, now you're just getting, you're becoming, you're definitely out of line, number one. Okay. And you know, yeah. Okay. It's interesting, you want to take a stand on this, but when there were other times where you, you should have took a stand and been braver, you chose not to. And, you know, we keep floating this seventy-one percent of the single tax rate. Over seventy percent of the state has ALS. But we needed to go out and spend fifty thousand dollars on a consultant to move forward with that. So you needed data for that. Don't need data for this.
All I'm saying is that if we're talking about an increase in taxes, three hundred and fifty-three dollars is on us. Twenty-four dollars would be on the split. If we talk about what's going to break the back of the taxpayers, we should look ourselves in the mirror when we're approving the budget in, in the spring.
Yeah, I will comment as well. The I, I know it is difficult. We've paused this effort or the recommend, we paused the last two years. I, I know it's challenging. I buy groceries. I'm a taxpayer. I do feel like the long ball approach is the, to continue the shift reduction. So that's kind of where I'm standing with this.
All right. Well, any other? So all in favor of the motion to shift from to one, one forty?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed.
Aye.
All right, so that does not pass?
Mr. Chairman, I would move to make the shift to one fifty-four.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
On one fifty-four, okay? A second on one fifty-four, any discussion? There being none, all in favor of one point five four?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed.
No.
No.
Defeat and, all right? Is there another motion?
I'll move to maintain the current shift of one point five zero.
Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Okay. Any discussion? There being none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Very good. Was it four oh? That was
It was four.
Four oh.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Moving on to Class Two Vehicle Dealer New License Hearing. Eleven seventy-seven Main Street Papa Auto LLC, if you are here. It's going to be down by
Oh, no, I know it is. It's right by Shaw's. It's the place on the other side of Shaw's by the, that's been closed. Toward, toward the diner, like.
Well, the, the, the old BMW gas station. Well, the the be the old BMW gas station.
Which is good, that places.
Oh.
Move out of order? Oh, yes.
Yeah, you can watch.
Oops. Oh.
Hello.
You're up.
I'm sorry.
You all, no problem. 1177 Main Street. Papa Auto LLC, if you could just introduce yourself, please.
My name is Mohammed Mashawi. I live in Fisbary. I have a business uh since three, three years, actually, in Auburn. Before that, three years in Worcester. And before that, I used to export cars and I have good, you know, good experience with cars. And I like to move to this location. I found it nice. It's been close for a long time ago. And it has a mechanic also for me. I do my cars, fix my cars. And, you know, that's the main thing.
Very good. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Excuse me.
Sure.
Where is this?
It's past Shaw's, right? I'm sorry, near Shaw's?
Yes.
Yeah, it's where BP used to be.
The old gas station.
BP on the corner, if you're going past Shaw's.
The BP?
It's been a close for me.
Yeah, yeah.
We'd often do a deal with the landlord.
Great. Is there anyone here to speak in favor of this application? There is not.
How many vehicles is he looking for?
Uh, around 20.
What? No, oh. Knowing that lot, I think that's a lot of vehicles, 20. You're talking where they they have the gas station.
They moved the gas station already. It's done.
Yeah, I know that, but I mean, where where are you going to fit 20 cars in that space?
Uh, we did the the planning already, you know, chose like a cruise 20 cars can fit.
Do you have a plan that shows that?
I don't have it with me. It's with the planning board, with the.
The planning boards approved it already?
Not yet.
Oh.
Not yet.
Well, then, Mr. Chairman, I would move that we defer until we have some kind of a report from the planning board. It just seems 20 is an awful lot of cars for that site. I'd like to see them.
Because they moved the the, you know, the things for gas, they moved the tank already, everything. It's open, clean, open.
I know it is. I know, sir. I now that they told me where it was, I know exactly where it is. Yeah. I'm just saying, to me, it seemed like.
I'm trying and aiming for 20, but if.
No, well, I'm just, I the plan, if if your plan is before the planning board, I'd just like to see what their
Sure.
their opinion is of it. I mean, that's only my recommendation.
Go first on this. Do we have to go first before the planning board?
I don't, that's what my question is, too.
Yeah, it's dual, yeah. I mean, the planning board does site plan review, uh but selectmen give the license, so it's always been do I pay the money to go to planning board to to see if I get a license or vice versa? So I know some boards have asked to say that would tentatively, you know, say that they're okay with the license, subject to seeing what limitations that the planning board puts on it. So you certainly can continue this hearing until you get more information from the planning board, if that if that's helpful.
I mean, yeah, I agree. I think it seems a little much, but if we made this contingent on what the planning board, are we willing to trust the planning board of this, Mary, or what do you want to do?
Yeah, I mean, I just, I just think 20 is harmful.
Yeah, I mean.
I mean, you know, I don't, I want to want to see you have a successful business, but I mean, you know, I just, I can't even envision 20 cars in that area.
Well, I do we have any information on like what other dealerships in town put on like the square footage? Because I feel like there's a few that pretty tight.
Yeah, I can get you a list of all the 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 numbers for each lot of what people currently have right now.
Yeah.
Like, just based on the space. I just want to be equitable in terms of their businesses in town.
So as selectperson Carrigan had mentioned, do we want to prove a contention upon what the planning board approves based upon, you know, I'm sure that they would into consideration and then.
More so than.
Or would you, do you prefer to continue the hearing and get that information first? What would be your? What what would you like to do?
I'm just, I mean, whatever the planning board, I mean, I would think that they would use good judgment, but, you know. I mean, I'm just saying myself, if if you ask me today and and we were determined, I'd say I would give you 10 cars and see how you do.
Okay, so are we all, are we all on board with approving a contingent upon the planning board? Or would you prefer to to continue the hearing? I'm 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 asking you.
Well, I mean, if if we if we want to approve it, I'd say I approve it with 10 vehicles.
All right, so.
We're continuing the hearing?
Yeah, let's continue the hearing. And then, once we hear back from the planning board, we'll let's, we'll continue the hearing. And then that way, we can make an informed decision at that point.
Good.
Okay, so so we could. Can we have anybody, is, well, I don't, is there anyone here to speak in opposition of this? There's not, okay. So can we close that portion of it? Close that portion of the hearing? And then the next meeting, we have, we then can review the planning board's recommendations and then move forward.
Exactly. So so you just to make a motion to, you know, keep the the matter open until the planning board acts and then can invite the business owner back with that information.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
So moved.
So moved.
Second.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Very good.
We'll get there.
Thank you very much.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Uh, the next item on the agenda, Superintendent of Public Works, 2024 paving bids and schedule.
Hi, Chris McGowan, DPW Superintendent. We went out to bid recently for a for a project. Just a little clarification. Generally, when we do paving slash road construction, it's kind of two different classes of of work. One will be, you know, paving with curving sidewalks and and just full reconstruction of a roadway. And the other that we've done paving very recently is more just a pulverizing and repaving. This would be a specific job. This wouldn't be the the pulverizing and paving. Usually, when those bid, we'll bid them for like a three-year period, and then you add streets in year to year. And these are more, the project we're looking at tonight is more of a design project that is specific to these streets. Once this project is done, then that'll be the end of this contract. There's no continuing. So this would be for Chestnut Street from mechanic to Cedar, so up here behind us here. And then up Church Street, so from Chestnut all the way up to the top to tie into the construction we did up at Cedar Street, up Church. And then also what I included in this project is the Greeley Street sidewalks that have been talked about for several years now. So the adding the sidewalks to the east side of the upper portion of Greeley Street that got voted on at town meeting, that's part of this project as well. The total project value was 946,209.75. Low bidder bidder was PJ Keating Company. We've done a lot of work with them over the years. The reason I'm bidding this project this early and bidding it now, usually the bid mid to late winter or early spring is granite is very difficult to get right now. You know, if we award this contract now, we could, they can order the granite, and then we'd be ready to go in the spring. Otherwise, we bid it late in the year, you know, you'd be looking at a late summer start, and this way we could start first thing in the spring. So BJ Keating would be my recommendation that we award this to. And the the money, this would be, the plan is to use about $660,000 worth of Chapter 90 money, which we have, we haven't used in a couple of years, so it leaves up basically all of our Chapter 90 money, and the balance would come out of our infrastructure warrant articles, which we still have about a million and a half dollars, million two left in in those funds.
Awesome. Uh, so for so for the Chestnut Street, so we're talking almost in front of the armory?
Just before the armory, and I stopped a little bit, stopped there on purpose, because there's so much talk about what's going to be happening. We've got a new owner on that building, so I'm going to leave the front of the armory the way it is. So we'll basically start right at that island, you know, at the corner of Park, the the Triangle Park, on both sides of the road coming down. The sidewalks would come up, and then we would be directing the pedestrian traffic, actually, across the street from there to go through the park. So we wouldn't be putting sidewalks from so from Union Street to to Church Street, we wouldn't be putting any sidewalks in there. We're going to direct everybody to walk through the park, and then they can walk right up Church Street. Both sides of the road will be, we are going to do granite curb on that stretch. It'll all be granite curb, concrete sidewalks, nice.
So in so in front of the wall on the St. John's property, so that would.
All concrete granite, yeah.
Okay, so it's there and then.
Up to Union.
Up to you, okay, and then then you would have the process of reach all through the park, so there'd be no sidewalks in front of the council on age and.
Yeah, exactly, because it's difficult, terrain there. Yeah. That'd be.
And and then you had mentioned, so then this also would include Church Street?
Yeah.
Going up to to the Cedar Street?
All the way up to Cedar Street, yeah. So from here all the way up up to him.
And both, both sides. Both sides and well.
And the Greeley Street sidewalk.
And then, so with Cedar Street, is where on Cedar Street are you talking?
Cedar's down, so.
Okay, no, okay, so on the.
Up Church to Cedar.
Okay, so this, okay, so it says Chestnut Street, Cedar Street, and Greeley Street sidewalks.
No, no, it says Chestnut Street, Church Street, and Greeley Street sidewalks. That's the bid. So that's.
Okay, that's perfect. So now, now again.
Makes more sense then.
Yeah, all right, so check, okay.
Not Chestnut Church and Greeley Street.
Perfect, all right. Excellent. Any other questions or discussion?
We're going to get a golden shovel. We're doing the golden shovel thing for Greeley Street, yes? I mean, sidewalks in town, I gotta be up there.
Those are granted also?
They're already firm up there. So we're going to leave a grass strip and dig out the sidewalk, pour the sidewalks, and then re-low and seat wherever it was.
Excellent. That's great.
It'll look the same as the other side of the street, basically, a little bit different for the most part, the same.
Perfect. Uh, any other questions?
Oh, yeah, what's Chapter 90?
Chapter 90 is our, we, years ago, we used to rely, well, not that many years ago, we relied on just Chapter 90 money. We get about $330,000, $340,000 a year from the state. And that's all we would use for paving in a given year. And I'll say we use that for, which which people always were asking, why does Wall Street take him so long? We were literally using that tiny bit of money to try to design that project, and we would, could only do piece of the large year. Now we have the infrastructure stabilization fund, so we're we're able to do, and we just finished paving a mile and a half of road, you know, last. We wouldn't do a mile and a half of road in in two years back then, so now we can do, we can do it year after year after year, which is great.
Thank you.
Excellent. Pleasure to the board.
Well, some movements, Mr. Chairman.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Next item on the agenda, all covered assurance, technology assessment review.
Needed in a minute, Mr. Chair.
Sure.
Please.
Follow you, okay.
Down.
Really?
Yeah. I wonder if I could just put it back. Just point the camera that way? Or one camera that way? Thanks.
Just say it.
He's going to do all the work.
Oh, okay.
I'll wait for the others.
Sure.
Yeah.
Sure.
Oh, there we go. Exciting.
So the public cannot hear you if you're not near the microphone on the table? So I think you you have to be. Mark, what would you recommend?
Yeah.
So what would you recommend for for them to be able to be heard?
Say one of these guys, if I help?
You can hold if you want. Just like this, not up here.
All right. I hope they're able to hear me. So.
Of course, one second. If your phone's on five or eight.
Yeah. Sensitive.
Let us see green light, man. Yeah. Let's go forward.
So. Um, so my name's Ryan, I'm the director of the government team for Conoco Mill to all cover New England. With me here is JD, who's our very smart enterprise engineer. And I just want to say a quick word, and I'm going to turn it over to JD. So Conoco Mill to all peppers based in Marlboro, right down the street. We do a lot of IT projects and services for towns, schools, municipalities throughout New England and the country as well. A few months ago, we were asked by the town of Clinton to come in and take a hard look at your IT environment and see what was working well, was not working well, and then, based on our experience with similar sized towns, you know, what would you recommend as a strategic plan for going forward on how to get the town to a place that has a solid foundation, that makes it in line with other towns, similar IT environments? And I just want to say that it's, you know, exciting to be here, see democracy in action, everybody has, you know, passionate viewpoints and great points and great debate. I think that's fantastic. And I think that one thing that, you know, is beyond debate at this point is that IT is everything, right? You guys all have computers and laptops and tablets. You guys are all connected to Wi-Fi. It's really vital that you have a foundation for your IT environment and work for the town to function in order to perform vital tasks, meaning government work. So what JD is going to present to you to you here is a comprehensive strategic plan that's going to give you guys a foundation for a very successful IT environment that will allow everyone to work and function. So I'm going to turn over to JD. He's going to take you through it.
So I'm JD, and I am in the enterprise art success. I'm actually based out of Los Angeles. I do math, whole design, solutioning, as well as actually a lot of the engineering project work. I actually specialize in mergers and acquisition based center in just, in just municipalities. Done work for a couple of cities in the Los Angeles County, as well as Arizona, Wyoming, done school districts in Michigan, as well as one of your neighborhoods. Uh, this is all in the past year. Uh, so I came on site about two months ago and worked with Matthew. Uh, we walked around to the different sites, talked to the department edits, specifically police, fire, senior center, and we went to the library to know what to be infrastructure in this building as well. Um, so I'll go ahead and we'll review presentation, and we'll go through some questions later, if you if you want to type in or anything. Stop me also if I'm wanting to fax. Uh, you'll get this presentation as well later for. Um, so the overview was much when you stopped and helped. Uh, we went through to look at how we can optimize your top of the gear. These are the key areas we looked at. So infrastructure itself, network messaging, B B P, primarily, backup recovery, telephone, and the IT operations itself. This is how we actually did it, kind of. Um, this is a quick map of the sites we went to. Uh, so starting with Town Hall, you have one active, well, you have two active directory domains here. They're not entirely unused. There's machines that are on the domain. There's a domain that was done a long time ago specifically for a tenant. That one's being phased out in favor of the primary domain. Uh, you have Comcast internet circuit, that's that's it. Uh, downstairs in the basement, there's some older Dell servers and firewall. Uh, downstairs in the basement, there's some older Dell servers, uh, firewall, as well as your big widdy that's your switching and the wireless access points. Um, your primary applications are Microsoft Office, and there's some cloud apps based around accounting and also uh, Vader, which is the municipality management software. That is in migration to the new district now, which is a cloud-based app, there's also an on-prem version, it's extremely expensive. Uh, the cloud app is heavily used, I've actually seen that all come, much of other government sites as well. It can run robust, it can do pretty much everything, it's just a matter of how much you pay, what volumes you use, but it is the industry standard for this kind of stuff. Um, their email is all over the place, but it's primarily through a pop. Uh, I believe hosted by one of the web companies right now. Um, and then public forums is actually outside of your domain, they're probably slated as well, and they're on Vader systems as well. Uh, police department is on their own little separate domain, it be, what I'm getting at here is our departments are very silent, we'll see that later. So police is completely separate, they're on their local domain, different Comcast connection. They do have a connection back to fire, because I was associating with dispatch, that's pretty much all the domain there. Um, they're all web apps, uh, they are using two F A, which is good, they have newer hardware and now a separate email domain. Uh, same thing with fire, they're on their own separate email domain, on their separate local domain, and they're going to their local data storage and retention. Library, also their own little side of them, um, they have their own Comcast, they are having issues with their Wi-Fi right now, and on separate email domain. Uh, senior center, same thing, they're using one web web application, throw in small little, uh, local domain and a small server for file query. So the key findings here are that everything's decentralized, there's no back to Town Hall for resources, everyone's doing the same. Uh, most governments I've seen that's completely opposite, everyone's coming back into Town Hall for resources. Um, there's connections back into Town Hall, Town Hall, particularly to the other departments. Given that's not the way this is built, I also have to say that all those other, uh, uh, companies, or sorry, channels with that have their own I T department, have an I T director, and there's a lot of little costs. Uh, so given that you're already decentralized already and that, um, a lot of the departments are happening, I don't want to come here and say let's centralize this, but a lot of infrastructure. So the goal here is let's move to the cloud, uh, we're gonna leave those domains in place, don't wanna disrupt what they're doing. But let's move the licensing to the cloud, let's take the cloud first first approach, not focus on centralized infrastructure there. Uh, for networking. Your Town Hall equipments relatively firewall case right now, the wireless is fairly limited, there's only two A Ps here. Like to expand that, I want to put those same, uh, that same infrastructure in these other departments as well. Um, yeah. Sorry. Okay, so the other piece is messaging is all over the place as well, so this is one thing you can't centralize because it's. So Microsoft has taken a lot of advice in government, almost ten years. It is the defacto industry standard piece, you're making not just municipalities, but large. Um, so Office three sixty-five is just really the easy recommendation here, it's almost over here. Uh, decentralizing licensing and that, you're paying for office anyway. This gives you the cloud license for consolidating your email to actual centralized dot com domain without disrupting anyone's other uh, on-prem domains or for operations there. The other piece here is two F A is highly recommended for email, see all kinds of tasks all over places, a lot of them that's very successful. At cracking email in small government, um, where two F A isn't. So going to the cloud of Microsoft lets you get this two F A in place. It's a hassle for everyone involved, but it's it's really required. The other piece is backup, so your infrastructure downstairs, they're releasing that, producing a local Microsoft backup solution to a local man. The challenge of that is all your data is literally against, including backups, so if there was a disaster, you're. Uh, the cloud solution comes that all of the data doesn't live on site, it's distributed already, plus we're gonna provide some other options around back to. Um, I see operations, so there's no on-prem staff, we just talked about. Relying firmly on a bunch of different speeds to support on the Town Hall, but the other various departments. So fire and police are very, very popular. Um, in terms of the other locations, libraries, city hall, and senior center, I would like to see them dissolve that. Um, we're gonna introduce the same hardware, same, uh, standards around those, would make sense to have same. So the solutions here are gonna be arguing front loaded, usually I like to lay out the three year plan. Can't really do that here, it's more of a one or two year, uh, we're not shoving a lot of money in. Because we're not investing heavily, uh, in on-prem, it's gonna be relatively low cost. Um, so high priority, this is a quick list, it's almost not where you will dive. Pretty deeply into all of this, the key one is what we talked about here is the email migration. The next piece is joining your remaining desktop, replacing your desktops. Um, there's only fifty of them that are over five years of this point, so we like the budget to replace all those with a standardized build. Join those to the cloud, uh, coming solution and modernize that. Other pieces, what we talked about backups, migrate your on-prem file server into the file. So that would be SharePoint solution that everyone could use and it's backed up there. The other, the fourth one we'll touch on later is you're using what's called painful telephone lines right now, it's not a voice solution. Uh, we did take away your bill, can reduce that as well as increase features. Um, number five is around security, uh, so this is managed services for security pieces, which you're not really doing. Um, if you had an incident, there'd be really no way to detect that someone's up key attacking. Uh, the sixth piece is let's standardize the template that's existed Town Hall. Uh, take that networking, we're in Ubiquity in Town Hall here, there's nothing wrong with that solution. Let's try to, uh, uh, bring that same networking infrastructure into each part. Last piece is standardizing your, uh, support for Town Hall. It's there, number nine, which is ongoing, means just pushing your your primary disaster applications in. Um, these are some additional things that aren't high priority, we're going to think about, which is if you are moving to cloud, then easier internet is very important, if you're gonna make those down. So let's try to have redundancy on the internet side. Uh, Wi-Fi is currently not integrated within user accounts, the risk there is if someone compromises a single password. You gotta change it, and that's that's not really the way you wanna do it. You generally wanna have it for user and integrate their computer login, so that one user leaves use. Their piece is actually more backups, additional protection for your data. And then the last piece is more in security, it comes out of content filter. Uh, so these are digital representations we're talking about here, um, and see how it all stuff. Stick that, um, this is what we see more than what we just talked about, so we're diving deeper into what exactly is downstairs. There's some very old living downstairs that we like to rather very close push it cloud. Um, this is pretty much what we talked about earlier as well, a quick diagram of your infrastructure here. Ubiquity four downstairs, the wireless C P is one sphere, it's another one, we've on other side of the building. Uh, hybrid host downstairs are posting your current domain controllers and applications. So this is a list of the servers. The important piece here is C O S, uh, two thousand eight, two thousand twelve are both end of life, but oh, about seven years ago. We, there's no security patching available from that, definitely real estate. Again, rather than spending ocean money on on replacing these, that pretty, so let's push it. Uh, so the gaps are discussed, end of life hardware and software there. Physical servers are downstairs, they're all cheaper, but there, we lost those in trouble, then the software version. So the strategy here is again, let's push to the cloud as much as we can, not invest in heavy on-prem structure. So, uh, I mentioned that Microsoft has very specialized plans for government. There are giving you ton of features for also achieve us. Um, so we would build out your new dot gov tenant in Azure. Um, save the existing domains, file please down ball to create user accounts there. And then join the new computers that are placing to that file domain. Uh, we migrate your files in there as well, and then, uh, the last piece is security with email. Uh, when I look at the logs for email, ninety-five percent of the attacks are when people train the login are from outside the United States. Uh, with this in place, it's very easy to say, no, I'm outside of the States involved, that cuts down your attacks by ninety-five percent. Um, it's fairly easy to do with some of the. Uh, phase two is let's replace the desktops, they're more than five years old, there's roughly sixty of them. We're gonna standardize on, uh, E tele hardware, um, those will be joined to the new cloud chamber. Uh, so this is the materials for that, which don't need, so okay, let's do it here. Um, and this is the rough post for for that phase. Uh, the future state, and this is after next year to next two years, is continue to reduce your physical footprint here. Retiring service downstairs, at some point, though, we know for instance. Uh, the most timeline, can we get this in the before twenty twenty-three, which is probably not for now, roughly eight weeks. Uh, so network, more mix of Dell and Big Widdy, uh, K I Empire running their own stuff. Library is also running their own stuff, I prefer to standardize that. Uh, let's stick with Ubiquity, it's already built up here, we'll just be extending that infrastructure. Um. So the gaps there are, and this is more typical around how each network is segmented between users and guests, uh, multiple Wi-fis. Uh, so the point here is we want to standard all that, standardize all this and implement, uh, uh, security policies. So the future state is what we've talked about, uh, let's standardize and let's bring that solution in, this is, I don't know what it looks like. Um, and cost there. Uh, so the next piece is, so security stuff we talked about earlier. Um, how can we secure our network without using the same network? This integrates it into the cloud directory software. Um, security piece here, and then, so I'm pointing really fast to those, otherwise it's maybe others. So messaging, we've touched this already, we're we're doing different things to different departments, so standardize that with the Office three sixty-five. Um, there's no reason to go on-prem, those governments and towns that are on-prem are usually at least five hundred users, if not a thousand. At that point, it makes a lot worse sense to stay on-prem, you're saving a lot of money there, but it also requires a key part of the new. Um. M F A, we looked at three different options, one we recommend is number two, it's basically true with all with the Azure move. So this is what that project looks like to take all those apartments into the Office three five file for messaging. Uh, this is the budget for that. There is recurring costs for them as well. So telecom, currently you are playing on a telephone system, splitly just began setting that set. Uh, you can reduce your costs as well as increase the shared capabilities and capabilities of the phone by just bringing that over here. Um, cost savings are about some hundred a month. Uh, there's some high level of spending on labor, remember for dispatch and security, everything else can move to lower than your existing internet circuits. Uh, so that was the work that was done on that, a lot of talk about why work is better. Um, and workflow to for that project. Uh, last piece is backup D R, by taking the cloud or solving a lot of problems if you're current backup D R. Uh, it is geographically dispersed, as well as there's ways in there to do, um, this is actually a good deal for lawyers. Which is a discovery, uh, if you ever do get a lawsuit, current system, it's gonna be very difficult to do any research. Or produce a discovery for who you know what what time, fact, I would say it's possibly possible. Um, this would allow you to reset, search and store messages, potentially network. Uh, so the gaps in your D R currently, talk about helps, it's everything's in the same place. And there's no real H A or or email battery. So the strategy here is is pushing the cloud again, um, establish a retention system on Office six fifty-five. Allows you to discover the restoration with individual users. Uh, One Drive is the way more protected using data, currently it's obviously it's their data on the desktop, that's the only business, there is no. So again, if you lost the ability, it's. This syncs that data with the cloud tenant we're establishing first step, which covers that because. Um. So this is the migration as well, it's the cloud backup design, both costs and that. Uh, these are the two initiatives we're suggesting. So I see operations. So I'm more in the image shop here, designing, southern Brian's more.
Yeah, well, I mean, a couple of questions just generally would be, did we look at parks and recreation? It it as part of this? And what about like over at the at the town, at the town barn, like the D P W barn?
Yeah, they don't have anything there, we did go offsite inventory, particularly on the the desktops. Uh, we did go to parks and grounds, I did not really go, you know, new sites, maybe because they didn't get out here.
Yeah.
Um, part of our innovation for the circuits has a blue ring circuit, as well as a bad circle. So the networking piece, where I said, let's standardize what's here, bring it to the some stuff.
Um, I just had a question, are you're you're proposing replacing the desktop computers with desktop computers or?
Uh, so yes, we're scared, uh, we we inventory everything and every so, we took everything that's over five years old, so let's replace it. The standard all want that, um, it's a low compact, so basically just a lot, it's a very complex design. Relatively inexpensive, but.
Is there any limitation in terms of like users? Uh, I'm thinking that right now, like if you're an elected official in town, like you don't get a town issued email address, which would be great for the the future, just in terms of like correspondence, like is there any limitations to how many people it could be?
Yes, so we did look at that as well, that was the, we did see a lot of email addresses not necessarily included.
Right.
I think on board members and for other people, that's included with the cost points that, uh, we're just maybe running on Microsoft. They're not getting attached up, the candidate, so we'll put a reward.
Okay. Great, thank you.
Any other question?
So like for the for the moment.
Okay, excellent, um, so I'll talk about sort of operations, uh, portion as in J D has mentioned a couple of acronyms, wanna make sure that we are all same paper, M F A is multi-factor authentication or two factor authentication. And a lot of this stuff in here, um, while my hundred percent goal style is not to bold business, to focus on cybersecurity, but the stuff that we are in using, position to be insurable is a word for through my, your cyber insurance provider. They mandate, they don't influence, touch, and response, and all factor authentication, security management. So in the event that something else happened, uh, protected, so a lot of this stuff that's in here, I'll put you guys in a much better place for that, which is extremely important. Um, so the actual operations fit, uh, piece is, um, uh, what we're going to recommend, let me go through this, I I think we'll have to start is is that all the things that we have that J D went through is things that will put the town in a position to be managed, like actually made it by a major certified, it's going to swanell desktops into updates and patches on your infrastructure, manage your network. If, uh, uh, wireless access point goes down, or a switch or router goes down, we can go in and fix it. The sort of place that that the town is in right now, it's really, it's very extremely difficult for someone to manage your environment, it's just really it's almost impossible, so all the things inherent that we've gone through so far are things that will put you in a position to actually be managed by someone, so not that we're like, you know, exorbitant, or you know, things that aren't needed, that's true. It's really to get you to a foundation, uh, right, you're not talking about any extra bells and whistles here, it's just a really foundation, right? So you're sturdy, then you can then build over something. Then you can then build over something. So when it comes to IT operations, I know Michael has, you know, taken a lot and, you know. Doing a lot and you guys do have a, um, provider for the town hall at the moment. Uh, well, you really have, you know, two options really. We did one of these assessments for the town of Westboro, um, last year, and they did all the recommendations for the past summer. So they made, they have made all the recommendations, the same process with them. Now, Westboro obviously is much bigger, you know, town, bigger population. Westboro has an IT director, Mark Stockman, he's been there many years. And three or four people, part of our recommendation for him was, you know, he needed another full-time employee. So we think we get that and recommended it. They approved it, which is fantastic. Uh, Westboro has, you know, five people in their IT department. You know, right now you guys have, you know, zero essentially, more or less. Um, it might be four or five. I forget exactly what it's four or five people in Westboro's IT department. Um, please have to have a guy who hires off a guy that's the greatest person in the market. So they had five people. Um, so, um, you guys really have two options. Do you bring someone on as a full-time employee? Or do you rely on a managed service provider who can do stuff primarily remotely for you, which is way more cost effective? Um, but also what's really important for something a town like you, especially for towns. Is having somebody onsite. You know, it's not a hundred percent remote because dealing with, you know, towns are sort of unique in terms of, you know, the end users. People like to be seen and, you know, see an actual person. So our main services or the main services we would recommend is, um, a managed platform that's going to include. Your help desk support. So you're all going to get computers, right? On the computers, we'll load our tools. So if something breaks in the computer, we can reboot in and fix it. We're going to do patches and updates on your computers. In addition to that, we're going to point, uh, put endpoint detection response on your computers as well. So that is mandated by Maya. And it's really one of the best protections you can have against an intrusion, cyber. Um, this will also really future-proof your IT because, um, it will allow you to grow. And if your needs change, you can adjust, you know, you can go down in services, you can go up in services. It's not a long-term, uh, situation. It's not hiring a full-time employee with benefits and salary longer. And for the amount of, you know, for your environment, you know, hiring a full-time employee probably is not, you know, is, I would not say you need it at this point. You don't have enough work for a full-time employee. Um, so going and sit modeling this is the most cost-effective way. And this also puts you in a really place to have a sort of strategic, you know, partnership point for it. You rely on expertise, working with other towns and municipalities. See what's working and be proactive in your, in your future IT endeavors because I know you guys are. And J D's, uh, alluded to this several times throughout the presentation. You guys have disparate systems and one-off little things here and there and. As we go through those things by the time, those are solutions at the time or less expensive. Not having a, you know, a centralized environment or not having the needless of everything. But over time, when you have disparate systems. That stuff costs more money than having a more solid platform where everyone's on the same platform because you can get better prices when everyone goes to the same platform. And standardized, that saves money over the long term. Um, so, you know, this goes into like, you know, the technical stuff of what we do for proactive services. We manage the workstations. Help desk support, manage your licensing, because now you guys are going through Microsoft three sixty-five. So you need a cloud service provider. You don't get a, uh, Microsoft. You don't get support from Microsoft unless you spend fifty thousand dollars a month, or you're not going to get a account manager. So you guys aren't going to spend fifty thousand dollars a month, obviously. So we would be your account manager through Microsoft, manage your licenses, remove ad licenses, manage your tenant. Even when you go to Microsoft three sixty-five, you know, that doesn't, you know, eliminate. Security. You need someone to manage your tenant, to do the security settings and configurations inside tenants, who do that for you. We'll monitor your network, your firewalls, your switches, make sure in the top, if something goes down, it'll get fixed. Preferably and ideally before anybody knows something is down. That's the ultimate goal. Um. Backup, uh, we'll manage any vendor you have. Um. And then we'll also back up to Microsoft three sixty-five. So that's another thing. Microsoft three sixty-five, people think, oh, we're in Microsoft three sixty-five, it's there forever. No, it's not. You need a backup solution to it. So we can go to Microsoft three sixty-five, you know. A backup solution to that. Um, so those are at high level. You know, if I do art management. E D Rs, something that, um, is in place or will be in place. You know, if I do art management, it's just managing your firewall. Volume release scanning, core security. That's pretty standard stuff. Server management. These are some of our tools. Um. Here it, yeah, I think one of the best, biggest things about it is like strategic, being strategic for management, being proactive. So if, if you decide to implement. What we recommended here today, that will give you guys a foundation, right? But I T, things change on a minute-by-minute basis, you know, so never mind, we're here about years. So if you're not proactive and looking at it. Come up with a plan for the next three, four, or five years. Then you're behind the curve, or you're going to, in a couple of years, you're going to be sort of back in a similar situation in the future, which is going to cost you more money. So, um. Every dollar this town spends and every time we work with is so important, right? You guys only, you guys have finite money. So the purchase you make in I T needs to be the right purchase. You make the wrong purchase in I T, that's a very cascading effect and causes major, major problems. So. You need to be strategic with how we're looking at the next two, three, four, or five years and planning and budgeting what your plan is, obviously. So. That is a very important part of, uh, any managed, uh, partner. Um, and the rest of this is sort of, you know. Just talks more detail about what a managed service partner does. Um, but I think I'll sort of leave it there at the moment. And I'm sure you guys have some questions if you would.
Yeah, right. And I just wanted, just to clarify, you alluded to it a little bit, but just to clarify for everyone. That in addition to the remote, uh, oversight that you'll be doing, there would be. An onsite component as well to some of that. Have the ability to send someone onsite to deal with any issues. But also then you have your back office team that can take care of the overall strategy, uh, that, uh, we would get the benefit.
Hundred percent right. So, you know, we have, we're in there, say, of our team, our program, we're also behind them. There's. You know, we, what you say, there are numerous engineers and support people who worked to put this recommendation together. And you can multiply that by three, three, which support your environment because a lot of different story. And I think there's so many things, so many expertise in them. Uh, special knowledge you need. So it's great to have a team to rely on. But yes, we would absolutely have a primary role. We would have, you know, scheduled. We would start our initial recommendation as eight hours on site per month for somebody. Would be great to have eight hours a week, and then your costs really, you know, fly, you know, get out of control really quickly. So. Eight hours, I think, is a good place to start with what you have. Same person, we're here every month. We schedule four hours every week or if we want to do that. Having someone on site is a very, very common one. Many times, you know, especially in municipal, it's kind of all setting. It's sort of key that you have somebody onsite at the base for I T. It's very difficult to do everything. This next.
Thank you for your point. It's one of the frustrations with I T, like the attack management. It's difficult to get some more stuff.
Now, uh, as far as hardware, is there anything built in where the hardware is, is updated routinely versus. Running it until it dies?
Yeah, I mean, there are many towns that are on like a schedule, so there's options. If you have great money available, person purchasing is, you know, the best way to go in terms of the cost. But a lot of other terms will, you know, be scared. So every three, four, or five years, at least for three or five years, and then it'll get in the number, or case of it's absolutely yes, recommend. It's a, yeah, it's on, it's on storage schedule.
So what we did with the recommendation for hardware, we're stake every few more five years. Maybe just give you, I mean, five years, it's refreshing. Will be only stipulated, standing. You said this, this initial run, we're behind on five years here. Initial run, you have this hardware model.
But as part of your service, would you provide that ongoing, uh, capital, uh, uh, plan that we would have? Yeah, and we may not every, every year be able to afford to do everything on there and may have to carry over. But would you then provide that to us every year that you'll say, all right, here's what we think you should do the next three years? Well, you missed this year, so now you got to kind of, you know, catch up and revise, keep revised.
That's a major part of, of this service is, you know, every, depends on the size of the customer, but minimum once a year, a strategic review and saying, here goes where it involved, here just not. Here's what you're, you're, our recommended, um, recommendations are for the next year. So that's a huge part of it. And I said, many factors. This is not a one and done situation. He, he can break through everything in here. And then we said, okay, we put that the next year. He goes, you know, you need something ongoing, you need it to be a strategic partnership to, when you're in the right direction, you guys want to straighten that. It's very, very important.
So when a municipality implements. This type of update. Is it? Uh, in, in terms of, you know, your opinion. Where does that fall in the list of priorities as far as like? Part of the budget, right? So the, does this become like? Uh, uh. One of the, the most vital aspects of the town's operations or, you know, it's one of the, one of the things that Michael has mentioned in the past was. Just depending on where the board was, where the value of technology fell. And, and to make sure that, you know, if this step was, if we move forward with a step that. It basically becomes part of the town's operation versus anywhere. If we need to cut, we're going to cut. The, the infrastructure or the technology side.
I think the, the piece there is, you know, about nineteen percent of the technology. There are towns that have the IT director here. You would manage the budget. They will, we'll do that for you. We'll give you this. Here's the budget chart I have this week, okay? Over the next, next years, if we don't have the money, let's, let's not do this. So that would be important. So they take this.
Yeah, that's, that's an excellent point that, and like I mentioned before, like, e- everything's like, you know, H B A. Cameras, everything is I T. So if you don't have a foundation, again, it's really a foundation here. If you don't have a foundation, it's just makes it difficult to function as a municipality or government, right? You guys are really very, you know, doing it now. Um, but it makes a challenge. You gotta be very, in our, in our assessment, the challenge. Okay, with the current setup, it's not working great. Um, that does cost the town the time, the time and money. And by giving you guys a foundation and a way to manage that up forward, it'll make you guys be more efficient, saving money over a long, look, we'll do this. And we haven't really touched on much, you know, cybersecurity, the security that's still here. So, you know, servers and. You know, it's just really not a good situation being, you know, it's not easy to go. It's very, very, um, you know, they're sorry. You know, everyone's sorry. So it doesn't matter who you. But they don't take it easy on us because, oh, they don't, they have old servers. They bought everything. So, um, this will give you a much, much better position.
I think you answered your question, yeah, presented by two. Right over.
Yeah.
And, and to highlight, did they just to, to follow up, to highlight, I guess, the critical needs, I think, of, of things that. We have to have, that we can't operate without, you know, really highlight those things, but. Um, and I think that once you get the infrastructure up to the speed. It's easier to manage, but this is also easier to upkeep and easier to upgrade because you won't be doing huge, uh, buys every year. It's just really tweaking it as you go.
And to that point, you're not the only one that has a particular size of mobile. You have cities in L A. Had spent it in six, seven years, but now they wouldn't get three, four. But everyone wasn't happy with the structure and. Currently, the point is, uh, we see it a lot where you also spent a lot. So it makes no sense to, to buy it for.
To their point, it feels, yeah, I'm sure it feels like a lot that. Super comprehensive presentation, but I kind of kept hearing like the same. Thing, which I appreciate in terms of like, this is to just kind of get us. Like foundationally, yeah, like feels, you know. Did both, both servers are in the basement, you know, if that should flood, we're kind of up creek, you know, so. Like, it's kind of like less as a, I, 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 and I'm a firm believer of like, if your computers are, are. And you're, everything's working well, that's efficiency and money saved in terms of employee time, which is hard to quantify. You know, it's much easier if you say this computer costs X amount of dollars versus like their time, but. It, it is all kind of factors. Yeah, exactly. Yeah. Uh, uh, and I kind of on that note, in terms of, you know, I'd ask about like the desktops, like was the assessment made like? There are maybe like parks and rec or D P W, like if they're traveling, like. Are they have equipment that supports their job like functions or is it just kind of like.
Interesting.
Desktops all around.
So this is all, like, Terry, it was all based on desktops.
Yeah.
But that being said, if we actually get it, then prove a bug. Time, time deeper into what the users.
Yeah.
Not very big over. In fact, I don't think there's anyone.
No.
Um, file infrastructure, less than. But that's one of the benefits of it. So that's also would be very easy to install. Probably about the same price anyways, like.
Yeah.
Um, and the new management system is, doesn't care if you're on par.
Okay. So, yeah, so kind of like looking at the end users. Jobs and their needs and what would be best of energy.
That's the show when they do it.
Yeah, I was going to say it's probably not possible.
This is part of striving here. This is about, he really likes to be here as the on-call. That, that, you know, we can.
Yeah.
I think that's.
This is I love the line. We did, we took, spend a lot of.
Yeah, just.
Things, but I have lots that are still there. You know, makes sense, you know, automate your reputation, show us the laptops and it's very important process, I'm sure.
Any other questions? Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you very much for this presentation. So then the next step will be to, uh, once we get the information, we can review and then have. Discussion.
Right. I think what I might ask, because I know it's on the presentation, is there a way to kind of do a budget summary?
Yeah.
Just to kind of break down, here are the budget recommendations, uh, a priority one, two, three, four, and then kind of give us a, a total. The, uh, the, the board has, uh, set aside some ARPA money to use to get this started. So hopefully looking at the figures that that might be a big impact. That might have a huge splash just using that. We can get a lot of it done and then see coming into the budget season, how much then we need to appropriate, uh, ongoing year-to-year.
Yeah. If we can separate, you know, initial capital versus.
Yeah.
I have, go ahead. So you did have it rolling down per mission area, per project, the recurring costs and the fixed costs?
Yeah.
I didn't summarize those. I will summarize that.
I have a summary. I can. Yeah.
So we'll, we'll include that when we send to you.
Like we, we can go over it now, but I have, though. Yeah, I've summarized from what was in your.
I think.
Okay.
I think once you give us everything.
Yeah, that's.
Then we'll adjust it all together.
Okay, yeah, for sure.
Of course. That would be helpful.
Absolutely. Any other questions before we thank you for your, uh, attention? Um, and, uh, yeah, any questions we can answer for you right now?
You answered all my questions. I appreciate it. I'm excited for it.
Yeah.
This is.
Huge.
Great.
Awesome.
Thank you.
I think, just to finalize, I think then, you know, the cloud is, is safer, more mobile to, to get the information. But I think we're looking to a lot of our applications now. We're starting to go to the cloud. So we're looking, we have a grant pending for some, uh, permitting. Uh, Munis will be an SaaS in the cloud. The vision, uh, software that the assessors just upgraded to, that's in the cloud. So we're seeing that more and more of it, it's going to be there. So by having our own, uh, infrastructure, part of that, everything else can.
Absolutely. It's great.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
All right. Next item, we have the American Rest and Plane Act recommendations. We have the technology improvements. Um. So I would say that goes hand in hand with the presentation that we just.
Uh. Exactly. So I think maybe for the next meeting, if we get that summary.
Done.
You want to get started. I think one of the biggest, uh, before, before you all leave. I think one of the biggest things that we talked about was the, uh, email in the Office three sixty-five. And I think that is fairly, not quick, but a fairly short timeframe. So we're not talking six months or a year or the something we can do.
Six, eight weeks. That's, that's on the line.
So, so, so if we do get, maybe not to approve everything right now, but some of the top priorities that they could stop working on immediately, great.
Excellent. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, uh, Town Administrator Report.
So. Chair, just, uh, just a couple of items, uh, three, three items tonight just to share. Just to publicly, I think it was in the packet, a letter, but just publicly to announce that the public police department received a Burn, Edward J. Burn Memorial Justice. Uh, grant in the amount of thirty-nine thousand two oh five to be used for narcotic analyzing, uh, equipment. Uh, so they were very happy to get that. Um, secondly, I just wanted to give a quick staffing update. Uh, no employee has been hired, uh, for the part-time position in the permitting clerk office. Uh, that nineteen hour that, that assists with boards and committees and with the, uh, building inspection office. Um, that position has been open. We have hired that person. They're finalizing all their onboarding and they, they'll be starting shortly. Um, a, uh, we did receive a resignation from a staff member in the treasure collector office. That position has been posted. Advertising, uh, deadline, uh, for the, uh, applications is this Friday. So we'll start, um, moving on, getting that position and, uh, back in place as we start a busy. Collection season after the holidays at, at the first of the year. Um, the public safety dispatcher, there was a vacancy, has just been.
Um, Public Safety Dispatch, although there was a vacancy, has just been filled. Those are part-time employee that moved to full-time. So that was kind of a seamless transition. So that worked out well. Uh, Council on Aging is seeking van drivers for uh part-time for about nineteen hours a week. So if anyone out there is interested, uh, please contact the senior center for that as well, too. Um, and the last thing was just a quick uh update on the uh employee survey. Uh, that uh, that was sent out to all staff, I think, as we may have mentioned last meeting. All members uh of the staff did complete it. So I want to thank everyone for taking the time uh to go through it. And we had a hundred percent compliance. The consultant is now compiling all of that data. Uh, and they'll come out with the final reports and recommendations. I'll come back to the select board for review.
Anytime, why not?
Uh, I don't. I think they just, uh, I think the deadline was, uh, I think they extended to this week. And everyone did get it in. So I think they just got all the data this week. So uh, probably, you know, hopefully, you know. By the holidays or shortly thereafter, we'll have some. Yeah.
Great.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Uh, there are no items for the administrative business. Um, all the new business, police federal law enforcement fund transfer. Uh, the police chief is requesting approval to transfer five thousand dollars from the federal law enforcement fund. To the state law enforcement fund to be used for the purchase of a rugged laptop computer for the narcotics unit. What is the pleasure of the board?
I'll move to prove that transfer.
Second, one second.
Any discussion? There'll be none. All in favor?
Aye.
Uh, any committee reports? All right, uh, community announcements. Parks and Recreation Registration. Clinton Parks and Recreation will open registration. For winter programs on Friday, December first, online at W W W dot Clinton rec dot com. Visit the department's website and click on the blue button for online registration for more details. The Library one hundred fiftieth anniversary event. The Bigelow Free Public Library will hold their one hundred fiftieth anniversary celebration on Wednesday, December sixth. From five thirty to seven thirty P M in the library community room. Come learn the history of the library and look forward to the future. Music and food will be part of the celebration. So we will be uh exiting public session and we will be entering executive session under Article six. Uh, for the South Meadow Road easement. Um, before we move into executive session, our next meeting is going to be on December fourteen.
Thirteen.
December thirteenth, Wednesday, December thirteenth. Uh, at seven P M. Um, I will, uh, will take roll call to enter into executive session.
Sean Kerrigan.
Julie Purstein.
Mary Dick.
Matt Koba Si, and we will not be returned to public session. Thank you very much and have a great night.
Good night.